The Board of Directors, the Garden City Chamber Area of Commerce, Rick Tomacek is here to my right, Vice President of the Chamber. He'll be the timekeeper for this evening. Holly Ayala is back here. There she is, is back here. She's from Town Place Suites by Marriott, and she's a Chamber Ambassador. She will be taking written questions from the audience, so she will pass out mail cards and pens if needed in order to write questions down. If we have time, we will take questions from the audience. This forum tonight is for three seats on the Garden City Commission. Each candidate will have up to five minutes for an opening statement. And the candidates that we have here tonight, Troy Andrew, Keith Collins, John Hahn, Melvin Dale, Pedro Rodriguez, and Lindsey Burns. Chris Hamlin was not able to make it tonight, but we have six folks here with those three seats at our forum. Names were pre-drawn to determine who will give opening statements first, and we'll start it tomorrow night with Troy when we get there. Following opening statements, the candidates will be asked questions prepared by the Chamber Government Affairs Committee, members of the Chamber, local community. Time permits, questions from the audience will be asked. If you have a question, please raise your hand, and Holly will provide a card for you to write on that question. You do have a pen, so, okay. Those questions will be handed to the moderator, and as time permits, we'll go through them. Candidates will have no more than two minutes to answer each question. Candidates will be notified when there are 30 seconds left for their answer. Candidates will take turns answering questions. In other words, we will start with Troy on the first question, then the second question will be Keith, and so that way we're not starting with the same person every time. The forum will wrap up with a three-minute closing from each candidate, and we will try to wrap this up by around 7:30. We want to respect folks' time, and we want to be as close to that as we can. If we go just a little bit past, just in order to finish up a question, we certainly will do that, but we want to honor your time. We'd like to thank the City of Garden City for providing the venue for tonight's forum. This forum is also live by clicking on the link at gardencitychamber.net and on the Chamber's Facebook page. It will also be broadcasted by the City of Garden City on Local Channel 8. It can also be viewed after the fact on the Facebook page, correct me? Okay, on our Facebook, the Chamber's Facebook page. With that, we're ready for opening statements, and Troy, you're up.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Troy Andrew, and I'm running to be your City Commissioner. When I was 10 years old, my dad started a new job. He started his own insurance agency, and I still remember him working around the clock. He was gone most of the day, and then in evenings, he had appointments. Well, it was at that time I knew I really needed to step up. I knew that it was time to really think about how I could really help each one of our family. And so my mom decided we need to do early morning paper outs. Now, for many of you, 4 o'clock is the time you're just sleeping good, but for some of us, we were up at 4 o'clock in the morning delivering your newspaper. She'd wake me up and say, hey, it's time to get to work. You know, having a small business then required a lot of hard work, and I knew that then, and it's really true today. Supporting small businesses who provide for families and also their children, it's important to me, and I know it's important to the people of Garden City. I knew it was also time to step and run for office when I heard a local official say, "It's cheaper to lock them up," and he was talking about young people that didn't help pay for help. You know, I thought about my four kids, and I really decided, you know, they're not disposable, and sometimes they needed help, and throwing them away or locking them up was not going to be the answer. Since that time, I have worked to bring over $2.3 million for prevention and intervention into our community. Our kids are our community, and I care about your kids. When elected, I want to change the way that we engage our elected officials. It'll be my responsibility to reach out, to work for you, and to value what you have to say. Your input is vital as we collectively make decisions that really impact us all. Family is important, and I want to make my children and your children have opportunities here that bring them back, bringing our best and our brightest back to Western Kansas. We need to continue not only to bring them back, but also to keep our community safe, affordable, and welcoming to everyone who chooses to live here. This year, I faced one of the toughest battles of my life and earned the title of cancer survivor. It was really hard for me to accept help. My family and I needed the help, but my community, through simple acts of kindness, bringing in meals, taking my kids to school, lots of phone calls, of course, Facebook posts, and then the thing that was really nice is someone even shoveled my walk, which was awesome. This is the kind of community that I want to be a part of, and I know it's time to step up and do my part and support those in your community. I'm grateful for what we have in your Garden City. I celebrate not only our diversity, but our ability to collaborate, to find solutions, to grow together, to help those who really need it, really think about taking care of our community. I want to be there to, I want to be there to engage you. I want to be there to ask the tough questions, and to listen, and to learn from our community. And I want to make Garden City the best place to live in Garden, in Kansas. I ask for your vote on November 7, and I thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Troy. Keith, your opening statement.
Thank you, Mark. After listening to Troy, I realized I didn't put together a fancy speech. What I want to say is that I have kind of been prepared to run for City Commission since I was a child. My grandfather, when I was in grade school, was a City Commissioner. My father was a City Commissioner when I was in middle school. And I asked them, especially my grandfather, I asked him why he would want to invest those hours, why he would want to do that work. So he owned a furniture and appliance store on Main Street at the time, and said, "Is it good for business?" He said, "No, it's not good for business. You'll make decisions that upset people, and people who would have done business with you won't do business for business." Then, "Why do you do it?" He said, "Because it's good for Garden City." He said, "Garden City has given us a lot, and we want to give back to it." I've loved living in Garden City. I've lived here all my life. I was born and raised here, and if I get elected, I'll be the third generation to serve on the City Commission, and I'm proud of that. I think our family has served this community well, and we want to continue doing that. When I walked into Matt Allen's office and told him that I wanted to run for City Commission, the first question he asked me was, "What is your agenda?" And I told Matt, "I don't have an agenda. I just enjoy helping. I want to help this community. I like being involved." I've looked at, you know, I've talked to the police chief and the fire chief and the heads of other departments. I've talked to members of the Commission, and I've talked to staff all over the city. And this city is incredibly well-run. This is a wonderful place to be. It's a joy to live here. I don't want to change Garden City. I want to help Garden City. I was told the other day that Garden City has grown as much as it's going to grow. The pie is only so big, I was told. And, you know, I can see that we've pretty much used up our entire pie, but I don't think this person realizes that this is Garden City. We're already baking another pie. Things are going to continue. There are three vibrant cities in Kansas. Garden City is one of them, and it's the only one in Western Kansas. I'm proud to be here. I love the way this city grows and the things we do. I think that's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, your opening statement.
Thank you, Mark. My name is John Hahn. I am the store manager with United Flyer List here in Garden City, Kansas. I was raised, was born and raised here in southwest Kansas. I began working in Garden City in 2002 for Office Solutions as a sales manager. I worked for Rich Taylor for 13 years with that company, and during those 13 years, I had a lot of experience with business and helping the business community. And in that, I want to return some of that experience that I have in the business community back to the community as far as when it comes to being a City Commissioner. Currently, I am the Chairman of the Ambassadors Group for the Garden City Area Chamber of Commerce, also on the Fannie County Young Professionals as Treasurer on that. And what I want to do as a Commissioner, and I have to agree with Melvin on that, I am not seeking office to get an agenda passed. I am seeking office to continue the success of Garden City the way we are now. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Melvin, your opening statement, please.
Thank you, Mark. It's an honor to be here, and I thank the Chamber of Commerce for putting this on again. There's tremendous privilege to be able to serve for this community. I came here in 1978 after I retired out of the Navy, and prior to going in the Navy, I lived everywhere, so this became my first home. I walked into the police station on an afternoon and talked to Armored Trout. And he talked to me for about an hour. At that point, he says, "Could I go and come back in about an hour?" I did. Came back, Captain Sullivan, Captain Armored Trout, and I can't think, Jimmy Grins was the other captain, interviewed me for about an hour, asked me to step out. I came back in, and they said, "You got a job. When do you want to go to work?" That was the quickest job I ever had, you know? My first job after getting out scared death. I lost all, you know, almost security blankets were gone because I'm now in Garden City America. One of the first things I learned is that to treat people like they'd like to be treated, and I did that for 30 years while I was in law enforcement, trying to treat everybody as an individual. I've arrested a lot, but some in jail, some I didn't get in jail, but it was my career. I did that until about 2008 and retired out of law enforcement after 30 years. I sat around for a while and decided that I needed more to do. I was hungry for something else, and I've always been. My wife will tell you, and she gets upset, if someone needs help, I'll raise my hand. If someone needs someone to go do something for them, I'll raise my hand. Sometimes she says I overload myself, but that's just what Melvin Dale is, is just wanting to be part and willing to help. So I got on the Commission. I had some help from John Dahl to get to replace him, and then got on, and I've been on the Commission, I think in January of 2013. I'm four and a half years. This is, be the second time I've ran. I want to continue to serve this community. I believe this community is just, is an exceptional community. It works together. We have a tremendous administration under Matt Allen. We have some good Commissioners that just put the time in that it takes, and we don't always agree, but we walk away still respecting one another, and that's what makes a Commission. And I would like to be part of that Commission for one more term, so I'm going to ask everybody out there to vote for me.
Thank you. Thank you, Melvin. Pedro, your opening statement, please.
Yes, my name is Pedro Rodriguez, and I knew Garden City a year after the Tyson VP was inception. While it was being built, I was a Deputy Sheriff for Wichita County the year of '78, '79. The lure of money and vacation and the thing, my wife and I decided to move to Garden City. We have three grown children. We live not too far from here on 11th Street. During that time, I just watched Garden City grow. I mean, literally, by leaps and bounds. Diversity was happening, and I saw many, many things, opportunities happening in Garden We did not stay in Garden City until, until the year 2002. We moved to Iowa. My wife was given a promotion, so I followed her out there. While in Iowa, I ran two terms as a City Councilman for a small town of Dennison in Iowa, and I truly enjoyed it. I learned many terms that I had never in my life heard. So I'm familiar with the infrastructure, public service, the necessity of taxes, and where they go, but I'm not too fond of taxes. While I was in Iowa, I did my best to continue, but when I moved to Garden City, I felt that because of my experience in government, I felt that there was a need for representation of cultural, cultural change and inclusion of the cultural communities in Garden City. And then I saw some other things that I felt that there was honor, those that have shed their blood, sweat, and tears, to give me the opportunity to do that. I also want to have an opportunity to defend the Constitution. I think that currently we have an assault as far as personal rights and even local rights. As a law enforcement officer, I myself was profiled, so I know what Mr. Andrews was talking about, about lock them up. Even as an officer, I'd be driving at 3:00 in the morning, and when I'd drive by some officers, they'd just pull me over because I was weaving and knowing that I was well-rested, and I was driving, you know, right. I had no defense other than saying, "No, I wasn't." But overall, I always liked to leave the, something to, that I thought was comical that was said by Mr. Ben Franklin, and he said, "Politicians are a lot like diapers. They have to be changed often and for the same reason." And ultimately, all I'd like to say is another quote by a very famous man, and it goes like this, it says, "It is regretted that the rich and powerful too often bend the acts of government as their own selfish purpose," for their own selfish purpose. And in order to help avoid that, the only way you can do that is if you are overlooking or oversighting that government process, and I'd like to offer that. I'd appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Lindsey, your opening statement, please.
Well, hi, I'm Lindsey Burns. I know so many faces in this room. My maiden name is Romi. I come from a farm family here in Fannie County, and went away for a while, went to medical school, and come back and lived here for five years. As I listen to the gentleman here to my right, I think all are wonderful candidates, obviously, and I think this would, I would echo this, you know, all are committed to this community, want to support this community, want to give back. I think we all share that, and so, and I commend everyone for running. And I would, of course, I'm going to ask for your vote, but that's really the reason I wanted to run too, and that was modeled, I think, you know, in the same way that so many of you have said, it was modeled in your family to serve your community. My dad was on the school board until the day I graduated and handed me my diploma and the hospital board, and I think what kind of sparked me to run for Commission was earlier this year, as I'd been thinking about it, considering it. I have three young children, and I'm a single working mom, and yet I was very impressed with the way the city handled the snowstorm, especially my neighborhood, and it interested me, and I started thinking, you know, wow, there is so much that happens in this city that I don't know and I don't understand, or I take for granted, but I'm glad it's there. I'm glad it works as well as it does. I absolutely agree with what you're saying. And then I started attending meetings, and I talked to some friends, and I talked to some Commissioners, and many folks encouraged me to run, and the more I learned, the more interested I became. And what I feel is very important and what I want to offer is I think that it's very strategic how we grow, and I think that what I would bring to the table is kind of that framework or that mindset of a single working mom with a young family, and yet someone who has grown in this community and wants to bloom in this community and wants my kids to have all the benefits that I did. And as I, as I learn more about what this community is doing and some of the initiatives that have happened, I see some very progressive, good, forward-thinking things happening, but that doesn't just happen. I mean, I think that really comes with very careful thought, very forward-thinking people, and I want to be a part of that. And so what I can offer is, I guess, you know, my commitment not only to this community, but my commitment to learn and listen, and as I've walked around and talked to my neighbors, folks have said they've seen my signs up while I've hauled my kids around my neighborhood in their red wagon with yard signs, but I have a very diverse neighborhood. There are young folks. There are folks who are elderly and have lived their entire lives here. There are people who have lived here for two years. That's the cool thing about Garden City. We need to, we are so diverse, and we say this again and again and again in the multicultural summits coming up, but we're talking age diversity, we're talking socioeconomic diversity, we're talking about language diversity, we're talking about cultural diversity, we're talking about ethnic diversity, we're talking about so many things, and I think one of the charges, you know, to the City Commission as well is to represent all of that, and that's a big task, and you have to listen to people, and you have to talk to people to understand that and experience that. I have been very privileged in my life. I had a good education. I make a good living. I'm able, you know, to, I'm able to have the kind of job that I can support myself and still come to a Commission meeting at 1:00, you know, and I think there's folks who aren't afforded that, and I hope to be a voice for those folks, and the way to do that is to listen and be involved in your community. So that's me.
Thank you, Lindsey. Okay, the first question, and Keith, we will start with you, and if you need me to repeat the question, just ask me, and I certainly will do that. And you may have answered part of this in your opening statement, so it's up to you if you want to repeat that, but what motivated you to run for City Commission? And do you have a particular issue or platform that you're campaigning on that you would tackle if you were elected?
No, I don't. I, my entire motivation is just to be involved, just to be part of the process, to put my input in and enjoy what I'm doing. I don't have an issue. I love the way this city's run. I don't agree with 100% of it, and if I did, I'd be silly, but I agree with most of it, and I just want a little bit of input. I don't have anything I want to change. I just want to be involved.
Thank you. John?
I grew up in a middle-class family. There were six of us kids, and in order for us to get things in our life, we had to work hard in order to do that. My dad was a police, in the Police Department in Liberal, Kansas. He was also the Superintendent of the Street Department there. I have many family members here in the Police Department, Sheriff's Department. Why I want to give back to the community is because I started working here in 2002, and I worked myself up to an amazing career in Garden City, and this sound has afforded me that benefit. As far as agenda items, I don't really have anything. I really think that there is several things we need to work on. One, we all know, is housing. Here in Garden City, we don't have the housing that we could need for our economic growth. One is childcare. I'm soon going to have a child in about two months, and we're having a heck of a time file on childcare. That's all I have.
Thank you. Melvin?
I think what motivated me was the friendliness and the openness of this city when I came here in about '78. I think at that time, it was only about 16,000 people. I've always been a small community-type person, you must say. I grew up somewhat in Wichita. I don't care for that. My first ship was a big carrier with 5,000 people. That irritated me, so then I went to submarines, and we only have 80 or 90. I like things small. But I used to watch some of the Commissioners in the past and what they did. I don't have an axe to grind with how they ran the city. I think the city has had tremendous amount of great mayors and Commissioners, and because of that, it just makes you feel like you want to be part of success, and that's what we've had in this city ever since about 1982 or '80, when they changed the course and they allowed Tyson or Iowa Beef to come in. At that time, it changed the whole community, and it's changed in the correct way, and I've been proud to be part of that. I owe that a lot to Dean Wiley. Most of these people don't remember Dean Wiley, but Dean Wiley had a vision. He knew how the streets should go. He knew where everything was, where every blanket was stored for civil defense or whatever. Dean Wiley didn't have a computer except up here, and it just made me proud that the city was able to be ran in the fashion it did. I have enjoyed what I've done on the City Commission, a lot of the things that started before I got on, but I was leased here to help bring them into being, and I just want to be here for the future because I know there's some other great things coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Pedro?
I'd say my motivation has come from a long, long time ago when I was bullied. That's the reason I wanted to take law enforcement, so that I could defend not just myself, but others. And in the process, I learned a lot of the necessity to serve the public, not only in law enforcement, but also in the need to include the minority, to include culture differences, to include, and I think I'm not special by any means, but I believe I'm uniquely qualified for that. Thank you.
Chris?
Well, I think to go on about how I've, I've thought about what this body does a lot, and I've learned a lot about what this body does, and I think that we have to be very deliberate when we consider those agenda items, and I think, you know, this Commission makes some big decisions that really impact folks. We're talking about the sales tax that's going to be on the ballot November 7. I support that, and I believe that judicious use of taxes is important. Don't kick me. I heard you, but that's important, and maybe that comes from living in a 100-year-old house, and maybe it comes from being a doctor and believing in preventive medicine, but we have to make investments in things, you know, going forward and planning going forward. But I understand taxes are a big issue to people. Those electric rate charges, the water rate charges, all of those things have a very real impact on folks, and so, you know, I don't know that I have an agenda to hold up taxes or change rates or do anything specific, but to be mindful of that and to think about the community as a whole when we're making those decisions.
Thank you. Troy?
Can you repeat that so I can? I've been listening, so I lost track of you.
It's okay. What motivated you to run for City Commission? And do you have a particular issue or platform that you're campaigning on that you would tackle if you were elected?
Yeah, so I also want to echo what a great job our City Commission has done for many years. I grew up here. My family moved here in 1968. I am a product, good or bad, of the Garden City School System. Graduated in 1981, went away to college and thought I was going to run away, and I went out to Oregon. It's not Oregon, but it's Oregon. I learned that. Some things are pronounced here the same in Kansas. But when I was out there, I realized that there was something missing, and it's really that hometown feel and the feel of other people knowing you. When you were there, you didn't wave at people, you didn't talk to people on the street. So part of this idea of coming back to Garden City, what motivates me is to really take this city to the next level. I really appreciate, like Keith said, growing up here, you have a special love for the people here, and, you know, we've seen a lot of the changes, and we've been through a lot of the growth, and so a lot of the work really caring about inclusion, including people in those decisions. I really care about really bringing young people back to our community. I mean, several other communities have been very successful in doing that. I know we've recently been successful in doing that, but I want to make sure it's affordable here to live, and so doing that, we have to make wise and judicious decisions about how we spend those tax dollars and making sure that those dollars that we ask for are really that they're done the best with. And so it's not really an issue, but it's really this idea of really listening to people about what's really important to them. You know, lots of times, the City Commissioner is a representative, and so if we're not able to go out and listen to the people and hear their side of the story, you know, lots of times, you know, there's lots of interpretations, and we have one as a City Commissioner. So I think this really, this issue of going out from these chambers and really thinking about asking others, "So what do you think about these?" Not always having people come to us, but really, again, that responsibility of going to others to find out, "How is this truly going to impact you, the decisions we as a City Commissioner are making?"
Thank you, Troy. Okay, John, we start with you now. One of the most important jobs a City Commissioner has is the act of prudently allocating taxpayer money. If elected, what would your budget priorities be?
Well, as the first role of government, the budget priority should be to serve and protect. Police and fire and public works- protect. Police and fire and public works would definitely be the places where you'd want to allocate that money. Thank you.
Melvin?
You're basically asking me what I would do with the tax money if I was in the commission. Okay, well, I can guarantee everybody here that the tax dollars are very important to all five commissioners. We look at that seriously. We only had to raise the mill levy one mill this year, which meant that we had to cut several mill from the budget from the employees without cutting employees. So everything we do is very important. The cost of electricity, water, and these things, we try to keep those as low as we possibly can. For in fact, we have, we started at the Jameson Energy Plant out there. We were buying our electricity or receiving our electricity from a major company. We decided to go on our own. We developed the Jameson Plant. And since the opening of that plant, that plant has profited us $11 million that went into reserve in the utility for electric. $11 million. That's a lot of money that we have saved. And we've passed a lot of that back to the people that we're supplying. We have invested in the future of water wells. We have enough water to supply this community for growth for 100 years. That is always important. We're using every dollar in every way we possibly can. We don't have enough money to do some of the projects we're getting ready to do with the tax increase. If we had to raise mill levy to fund the $18 million it's going to take to do the zoo, the Jenny Barker Road, the fire station, and the shooting range, we probably would have to raise six or seven mills levies to fund it. So we are watching your dollar every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tough act to follow. But I will say that the allocating of funds would be definitely for the infrastructure, our roads, our potholes, and of course, make sure people are given the safety that they need to live and to work and live happily ever after. Thank you.
Well, I would agree with those things. And I think what Mayor Dale's saying about the Jameson Energy Center is a great example of the forward-thinking and the excellent planning that's been done by the city thus far. Exactly. We absolutely need to be investing in those kind of projects. And to look at those savings, that's exactly how we were, you know, how that comes back around to pay off the investment of the taxpayer in doing those kind of things and using the bonds and using some of the other grants and things that were available. And as we're talking about the capital improvement projects, they're all necessary. They are all necessary in my mind. We can discuss the merits of each, but I think these are things that have been very well considered, thought out, waited on for a long time. And the way that this tax, the sales tax that's being proposed is probably about the fairest way we can, I think, go about getting that money. I agree. It's been phenomenal not to have to raise the mill any further. And going through the budget process this year and attending those meetings, I learned so much about that. I agree. Those tax dollars are guarded and very thoughtfully spent. I don't know that I have one specific budget priority, but I'm very interested in continuing that tradition of looking at projects like the Jameson Energy Center because exactly, we are reaping the rewards of that investment right now. And it's exciting. It really is. Incommittable.
John?
So the responsibility of the city for me really is this idea of essential services. And so I really appreciate what John talked about, this idea of the police and the fire and electricity. And I think we do have responsibility as far as passing those savings on. And so, you know, some of these things that were, that we talked, we talked a lot about the sales tax. I'm sure the question's going to come up. And this idea of really, as far as the city, we really need to live, we live on less than we make. And so that's the idea of really protecting those tax dollars. And I think we've done a really good job of that. I mean, really watching the mill levy has been really important, especially to homeowners, but not only to homeowners, but people who rent. Because oftentimes, when the mill levy goes up, that's passed on to these renters. And a lot of times, these are the people who really bear the brunt of that cost. So I think, you know, really thinking about, I sat through a lot of the sales tax, the issues, and listened to all of the different items that they were really going to do. And I think it's really important that we pay attention to every dollar that we're thinking about, how that's going to be allocated in our city. I know the budget process is a long process, and it's an important one. And I do appreciate the great job our commissioners have done over the years. But I really think this idea of really thinking about what essential services look like and really taking each, as Lindsay said, really those, of those merits, really what's going to benefit our community in the long run. So looking toward the future.
Thank you. Keith?
You know, I was talking just before this meeting with a county commissioner. And he was telling me that it's frustrating that if you have an issue, like maybe something as simple as a change in the cable company, everybody fill a room. But when it comes time for the budget, you can't get anybody in the meeting. Nobody cares until after you pass the budget. And then somebody grips at you. It's kind of a silly process. I don't know how you get people involved. But I do know that the people that are involved have done a wonderful job of protecting our dollars. They give us quality of life. They give us protection. And they give us essential services. That's really what city government is all about. But I'm amazed at the quality of life issues that have come up. The sales tax issue is going to be a huge deal. And there's not a project on there that hasn't been discussed in the capital improvement program for years. And we've known that it needed to happen. But nobody's been able to fund it. This is a great way to fund it. We need the fire station. We need the shooting range. We need improvements to the zoo. We're going to get them. Thank you.
These folks did not know what these questions were prior to this. His next question, it's almost like you guys knew it was coming.
It's a little question.
And Melvin, we'll start with you. Are you in favor of increasing the local sales tax rate to fund community development projects? If so, do you support the proposed .3 cent county-wide sales tax increase to fund the four community projects that have been identified? Or are there other projects that you would like to see funded?
Yes. There's no doubt in my mind that this is the most important thing that we're going to have on the, other than us commissioners, one of the three of us being voted back on. But the fact that we're going to have this sale tax issue to finance these projects, it's been, some of them have been around for eight, 10 years. And there's just not been a way to do it without raising the mill levy. This opportunity came up to do it this way. The goal is to do them to increments and try to pay for them as we go on the first increment and then do the fire station, which is the most expensive, which will start in 2024, three and be finished in 2024. The .30 sales tax is, you know, when you look at it and try to figure out what it is, I like to say it's three tenths of one penny. That's like, you know, not very much money at all. It will provide all these things. We sat down and looked at the gamut of everything that was on the CIP. We looked at them and figured out what we could do that would best serve for a budget of about $18 million. We came up with these items, and this is where we're going to go with them. Granted, there's some things out there. But this is going to be the hallmark of what's going to happen this year by the voters voting this in, if they do, that in, we won't have any other major projects like this for another 15 years. So we need to do this and do it right because if it fails, we may be in trouble.
Thank you.
I'd like to say that of the four projects, I'd like to only support two. And with those two, there's some stipulations that I'd like to include. The shooting range, for example, I'd like to have those that do attend, an additional education in the psychology of the, after the bullet goes off the barrel, there's going to be a reaction. A little bit about the law involving firearms and the use of the firearms. I think that if that would come with the, with the attending, with the attendance of the firing range, I'd be more unhappy too. Because in my, just my opinion alone, I feel that many officers fire a weapon but questionable reasons as to the firing. And with this course, I would assume that they would be better qualified. As far as the zoo, I'm skeptical of that. And my reason for it is I believe that in our community, we have veterans, and we could probably be able to use that money to help them along. I would put a, I'm sorry to say, I would put a veteran before an elephant any day. Thank you.
Lindsay?
I support the tax. I do. I think all of them are worthy projects. I think that I don't think that they're mutually exclusive. I think that we could, and it's a little bit more difficult on a city level, but absolutely veterans deserve support. But we're talking about the things that the city controls. I think that that zoo is a jewel of our community and brings a lot of visitors in, but is also very central to the identity of Garden City. And, but all of the projects, like I say, I think have merit. Now, I want to be cognizant, and I am cognizant, of the fact that sales tax is high. Now, if you look at communities across the state, we're actually on the lower end. Lawrence is higher, Lenexa is higher, Hutch is higher. All of those are over 9%. So, you know, we're not, this isn't an untenable increase by any means, and certainly because it sunsets after 15 years. The thing I do have issue with, and this isn't a city level, but something that I hope that the state legislature looks at, is the tax on essential goods like food. Sales tax that's almost, you know, 9% including food is very hard on working families. That's not something that we can control so much. And city government unfortunately only has so many levers to pull. There's only so many ways that we can raise local funds. This is one. This is a fair tax in my mind because it spreads it out to folks who visit our county and helps us pay for that, too. And so that, I do support it, as I've said now, what, five times?
Thank you. John?
Can you repeat the question just so we can?
Sure. Are you in favor of increasing the local sales tax rate to fund community development projects? If so, do you support the proposed .3 cent county-wide sales tax increase to fund the four community projects that have been identified? Or are there other projects you would like to see funded?
Well, so I really liked seeing our community move forward and do some really great things. And so I was really all for it. And when I talked to a lot of people around the community, I thought they would be for it too. But unfortunately, that's not what I was hearing. And so this idea of really holding multiple interpretations and thinking about, so how does that impact people? You know, we have a lot of people who are now coming in, you know, especially senior adults who are living on fixed incomes, and they're having to make decision between carrying full coverage or buying their medication. And we have a lot of families who work two and three jobs. You talk about being a single mom. And some single moms work two and three jobs to make kids meet. So whether or not the sales tax, and I don't think it's so much this sales tax, but it's... The mill levy, the city is not the only entity that can raise the mill levy. Yeah, there's several entities. So it's not just a one, one and. And so what the city does, I think, really has to look over impact. I love the Jenny Barker project. I'm totally a favorite of that. It needs to be done. But we knew that 10 years ago. So this idea of why didn't we save? And this idea of when we buy things in our family, we save for it. We don't buy things that we can't afford. And so I'm thinking, I asked several times, why didn't we save for these kind of things? The one project I would have really loved to see supported was the airport. 80%, of those dollars could have been federally done if it was a match. If we want to bring more bigger business and more business into our community, a new regional airport, ours is woefully inadequate. It really needs to be something done. So, you know, at this time, it's really hard. It's something as far as whether I, I don't think I'm going to vote for it because of what the people that I'm talking with and hearing from the community. This idea of it's not just this, but it's everything together. And so at this time, I'm not in favor of the sales tax.
Thank you. Keith?
I am in favor of the sales tax. I think there are things that, you know, it's been frustrating working on the CIP for years, working on these same projects for years and identifying that they needed to be done. And it's just not my impression. This is the entire citizenry that contributed to the CIP. We all know that these projects need to be done. But we haven't been able to find the financing for them. The fire department is not about increasing the size of the fire department. We need a fire department there, a fire station, a third fire station, to save lives and protect property. That's all they do. But they operate in minutes. I have a law enforcement background. Years ago, I used to drive an ambulance. And I was a police officer. Seconds count. Seconds always count. When you're saving lives, when you're going to an accident, when you're going to a fire. There's a lot of trailer homes out there, and trailer homes don't last long in a fire. Seconds count. And the fire department is there just to save lives and protect property. We need the firing range. I've been, I've shot in that firing range that we currently have. It's woefully inadequate. It's grumbling. It smells like mold. It's not a pleasant place to be. It's dangerous. The zoo operates on animals in unsanitary conditions. That's not acceptable. We need to support our zoo. We need to take care of the animals. And I've got a lot more to say, but he says I can't say it. So I'll rest it with that.
Thank you, Keith. John?
I would say that I'm in more favor of a sales tax increase instead of a mill levy. We are the regional hub for retail in southwest Kansas and our surrounding states. We do have a lot of people from all over the place come here and use our retail. As a commissioner, I think they did the right thing, is put it on the ballot. And it should be up to the voters to decide whether or not it passes. At the point it doesn't pass because the community input might be bad, and it doesn't pass, it's at that point that a commissioner needs to prioritize which projects need to go first and how to fund those without increasing taxes or mill levy. Because as we grow as a community, our retail gets larger and larger, we should be getting in more tax revenue from that larger retail. Thank you.
Okay, Pedro, we'll start with you this time. Are you in favor of the Star Bond Project, Sports of the World, currently being considered by the city commission?
Would you repeat that?
Are you in favor of the Star Bond Project, which is called Sports of the World, that is currently being considered by the city commission?
Yes.
That's my answer.
No. And here's why. So Star Bonds, as I understand them, began with the Kansas Speedway. And the whole idea was that it was a bond, it's a bond, but you pay it back with sales tax. We're already talking about raising sales tax and things that we've tried to raise taxes, you know, to pay for things already existing in our, in our community that have been on the, on the table for 10 years further. So I get it. It would be nice to have, it'd be nice to have. I don't think that's a priority at this time. And I think that the state legislature isn't sure that the Star Bond program is going to continue. So it might be a moot point. I know it's been extended, but I don't know that that's going to continue to be a viable way to fund things. And I just don't think it's right for our community right now, although I think it would be a nice luxury. I don't think it is a necessary thing right now. It's like some of the other things that we're talking about.
So I agree with Lindsay. This idea of, I think it's a really great project, and I'm, and I've had the privilege of seeing it lots of times where we wanted to build a convention center. We, obviously, those are some of the kind of things that we really need. But I know Star Bond dollars cannot be used for convention centers. So as far as the funding on this, I'm concerned about with the state's budget crisis and you're hearing the state legislators talk about how it's going to even be in a harder year, even though we've got some additional dollars flowing in, whether or not that's really going to actually happen. As far as what that could actually become, I know it really depends on who actually is the major contributor. So I love the ideas that they're floating. I can imagine skating in western Kansas, ice skating. I think it'd be really cool. But this idea of, again, so what's really, what does our community really need? And I also want to think about this idea of, you know, with the zoo, they, we have a friends of Lee Richardson Zoo who has, is an incredibly powerful organization. And so sometimes I think that we don't use those organizations to support those kind of things, rather than we're always looking for tax dollars or this kind of thing to really support these. But I think as far as keeping building the facility might be the easy part, paying for the facility long-term, that's where the real expense happens. You know, I look over in Dodge, and keeping that United Wireless Arena filled and paid for, they have really struggled, and they have a sales tax that never sunsets. So, you know, that's really hard. I like the idea of building it. I think that could be done pretty reasonable. But this idea of how are we going to continue to fund it year after year, that's where I think it'd really struggle for our community.
Well, as I understand it, it's not our responsibility to fund it year after year. The Star Bond is paid for by an individual investor who makes money off of the profits of the facility. And it is also paid for by five and a half or six and a half percent of the sales tax that's kicked in by the state. It's not our community that's paying for it. It is our community that benefits from it. It will bring additional activities to Garden City. It will bring tournaments. It will bring things that Garden City can use. It would be good for Garden City. We don't have the responsibility of paying for it. I'm very much in favor of it, yes.
I'm in favor of the Star Bond, and like Keith said, it's, majority of it is private investor money that's going to take care of that. It's an actual recapture tax dollars. It's not a tax increase like some people are confused about. This is not going to be additional sales tax on the Star Bond project. I think in Garden City, we do need some more entertainment options, some more sport options. As a community, we're doing a fantastic job as a regional retail hub, and I think we can also capture that as an entertainment hub as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree particularly with what the people have said here. I'm in favor of it. When they said the tax dollars, just, there's a certain area of Garden City that has been set aside a number of years ago to be used on the sales tax that went to the state. Rather than go to the state, the state is going to obligate that into the Star Bond to pay for that. There's going to be private money in there. It's going to be ran by privates. We're not going to operate that. That's a, once it's built, it's theirs. Basically, all we are is a mediator trying to get this thing on the table and go. And, and it'll have to be approved, but the bonding will be set basically if the right investor comes along. I'd like to go back to another topic here. Talked about the JB Road, Jenny Barker Road that had been put off for a number of years and wondered why we didn't save the money to be able to do it. It's hard to save money on a, on a project like that. Garden City did from, from Schulman Avenue clear to 50, that they paid for that. County was supposed to do from Schulman Avenue to 156. That was supposed to come out of their budget. They kept putting it off and putting it off, and it went from a $2 million budget to $6 By, by us doing this, we have taken and put it on this thing, the county now will get that road finished and it'll be taken care of. But those projects for us, we could never save seven or eight million dollars like you would save $50 to buy a new refrigerator or whatever. Cities and governments don't operate that way. You just can't build up that kind of cash. Airport was looked at as a process to, to put on the tax thing. It wasn't ready. It would have cost too much money, and so it's been put aside. And besides, you could build an airport, but we don't control the planes, and there are no planes or pilots to make additional airlines out there.
Reminder, if you have any questions, please raise your hand. Holly will get a, go hard to you and take those. Lindsay, we'll start with you on this one. While the housing crunch has eased some recent years with the addition of new residential developments in and around Garden City, the need for additional housing continues to be a community issue. What do you see as the most pressing need when it comes to housing in the community? And what should the city be doing to help meet this need?
Okay, so speaking from my, my personal experience when I was in primary care practice here, and I, and a lot of times I think I'm speaking, like I said, I, I want to be a voice for other people that may not have, have a voice or aren't empowered to use it. A lot, a lot of my patients, and I only saw a fraction of folks, were living multiple families to a home in very substandard housing. I think the range of housing that's available and what is considered, even considered housing in some parts of our city really needs to be looked at. We need to, and, and not putting at fault anyone, I'm just saying we need to really look at really low-income housing and making more units that are affordable. Because right now, there are multiple families stuffed into a low-income house. And then you look at, you know, I know there's more development with the middle-income housing. Well, that's a, that's a pretty high standard yet. That's, that's unattainable for a lot of families. And it's nice that there's more of those units coming in, and, and I'm certain that they'll be filled because across all areas of income, I think we need housing. And we know that the cost of living here is a little bit higher than other places. But we really need to look at low-income housing and more units and more livable units, I think. And, and again, there's huge variation across our community, and some of it is hidden.
So I think the word affordable is, it's really hard to come up with what that means. But I think, again, there are a full range of housing across lots of different spectrums. And so I really appreciate what the city already does. I mean, they do a lot of the, I think, developing some of the land, and I think continuing to build places where the infrastructure's already put in. A lot of developers, so they don't have to pass that cap, cost on to homeowners. I really appreciate the way that they've really looked for developers and been working with local contractors to say, hey, how can we help? And I know the city has really worked hard to really develop those areas. So, I mean, I think continuing with what we're already doing, it is, it's a slow process, you know, really filling that gap. But I really appreciate what we've already done, building that infrastructure and also looking for ways to, again, help contractors really be successful so that they are incentivized to continue building in Garden City.
That is a very complicated issue. We need housing. We've known that for years. Finding the programs that allow new construction is challenging. The city has done a great job with that. They've provided benefits that allow contractors to come in and build a house, make it affordable, and make a profit. But new construction is very difficult. It's very expensive. You know, I'm looking at houses in, in some new developments that are starting at $300,000. I would hate to have to, you know, I think of me when I was a police officer and young with two small kids, I could not have bought a house. It wouldn't have been possible. I don't know how you get new construction that is affordable. I don't know how you present those programs, but it's something I'd like to look into.
This is something I come up with quite a bit in speaking with people. Part of the Fannie County Young Professionals, we, we deal with a lot of the new people to Garden City, and that's one of the biggest complaints is we can't seem to find housing. And when we do, we find a one-bedroom place to rent for $700, $800. It's way too much. It's something we deal with quite a bit. And as a commissioner, we should look at what those programs are and how we can help these contractors become profitable, make these affordable housing. I'm sure it's been looked at a lot by the city of Garden City. I think it needs to be revisited. And if our local contractors and developers can't make it happen, what do we need to do to seek outside help? Outside people, developers come in, invest in our community, and get this going. Thank you.
We look at, at that often, trying to figure out how we can, can reduce the cost of housing, how we can get more built, how we can do it cheaper. We go out and, and put in the infrastructure that needs to be to cut it down. But you know, it's, the land price is just out of sight. Probably to build a house, I don't think you can build a house for less than $100 a square foot. And if you build a 1,000-square-foot house, you're almost, you're way up there. You just, you're probably $100,000. And I don't know that you can build them at that price. The other thing is, is affordable house. This is, this is how it's been a myth to me. I first came on the commission and, and, and wondered about that and tried to come up with a solution. But, you know, what's affordable to Troy may not be affordable to John or Lindsay or Barnes, but, but it's still, if you buy it, that's affordable to you, okay? So it's, it's based upon who's buying the house, you determine affordability. The real affordability houses are those that move up. You, you're not going to have a new house. You move into that house now that, that's about $100,000, and you make that your starter home, and then you can move up. But you're not going to go out and buy affordable, brand-new homes in the community. That's just an impossibility. If there was a way to do it, we would. But we try everything we can to get as much building. Our inspections department, the planning commission, everybody is trying to figure out how we can do this in the cheapest way we possibly can and get everybody. But, and we don't control the, the rents and what they charge. We have limited control of what we can do in that area.
When I was in Iowa, I bragged a lot about Kansas, about how the city was to reiterate what you said about Bonnet Tally and many others. But they told me like this, you're not in Kansas anymore. I probably see the same thing here, I'm not in Iowa anymore. When I was the commission, or correction, the councilman, the state had many, I don't know what you'd call them, but they were not necessarily loans, but they were low-interest loans, they were, there's, you would, you used the word incentive. The, the state had many incentives to, to encourage housing. The, the city itself had so many tax-free years to build a house, and if you didn't build it during that time, you were penalized. So they literally give you the land to build the house, and then if you built it within a certain allowed time, then you were, you're home free. But I guess, I'm not in Iowa anymore, so I'm not sure, I'm unfamiliar with the incentives that this, the state and or the local city would provide for the contractors, but I really look into it because there's definitely a shortage of housing, and I too experienced quality housing. Thank you.
Okay, now it's due to some questions from the audience here. And Troy, we're back to you. Do you envision any opportunities to enhance the cooperative working relationships between the city of Garden City and other local units of government?
Yeah, I, I think right now, we have a unique opportunity to really work very closely the city and the county together. And so I'm really excited. I'm excited about the work that they're doing. I know that the leadership of both are really working hard to think about, so what does it look like to collaborate and to cooperate and really move our city forward? So I, we're really, we're in a time of cooperation. There's been a lot of changes in both, and so I'm excited. When elected, I want to, and you continue that, I think, you know, as, we really can operate as a city within the county and not communicate. You know, one of the things that I get to do a lot of work with the level of Fannie County, and we've really tried to include the city of Holcomb. You know, when you're in a county together, you really have to work hard to really value those resources. I know they take advantage of a lot of the resources that we have. And so I really appreciate that, that spirit of cooperation and really looking at, so what does it look like in order to collaborate so that we can be successful as a county? I, you know, I love living out in western Kansas, and I appreciate our neighbors in Liberal and Dodge, and I know that they too rely on us. John talked about us being a leader, not only in, not only in shopping and, and those kind of things, but also a leader in how we run our city and how we cooperate with one another. I really appreciate the county commission has recently been really stepping out and wanting to bring other commissioners to the table and to think about how can we work together in our region. So I'm pretty impressed with what's going on right now.
I don't remember a time, a period of time, when the commissioners, both county and city, didn't work together. This has always been an amicable place. I mean, we, we do a good job of communicating with each other. Yeah, there's issues that we don't agree with, but in general, we do a pretty good job of working with, with each other. And I don't see that changing. I, as, I'm a board member for Kansas Works One, which is, and Kansas Works is the state employment agency. Kansas Work One, they call it a local agency. We only cover two-thirds of the state of Kansas. When I'm in a board meeting, I get an opportunity to talk to people from all over the state. And often, they have told me they are jealous, literally jealous of what we have in Garden City and Fannie County, because they can't get their agencies to agree or talk on any issue. I think we do a great job. And as a commissioner, I would continue that. The county commissioners, many of them are my friends. I don't see that changing. I think it's a great opportunity to continue with what they have been doing for a long time.
I think as a community, we are, and in the surrounding areas, we are very blessed with amazing leadership. And I know the chamber used to do what they call an entities meeting once a month. I don't know if they still do that or not. I think that needs to come back. I don't know if the chamber does it, or the city commission does it, or somebody within government does it. But I think the more that we all work together, all these entities, even from city of Holcomb, Fannie County, Fannie County Economic Development, Downtown Vision, Garden City, I think if the more we work together, the better off our community is going to be. Thank you.
I think the Garden City and the Fannie County will continue to work together for many years to come. We've been doing it for several years. Periodically throughout the year, we will, we will get together, the county will be here, we'll be here, and Holcomb comes in. We sit down, we brainstorm some things. We may not always agree, but at least we sit down, talk about things, the future, what we can do together, what we can't. But I think that that is, is very positive for both the local government. Also, when we first started on this tax thing, the sales tax increase, we used all the enemy, our people, the Holcomb, the county, and the city all sat down, looked at it, figured out what we wanted to do, what we could do, whether they were on board. They all became partners in it. Holcomb is even going to receive about $83,000 a year from this. And so I think we have a good working relationship. I think it'll continue, and I know that everybody on the present commission, that's their goal is to cooperation and see what we can do. Thank you.
I believe cooperation between county and city is inevitable. It's like the right hand or left hand. The county people have to come to the city, and the city definitely have to traverse the county. In my experience is... have to traverse the county. In my experience, there was a project that sooner or later the county was not considered. It was just part of the plan, always reaching out for help, and I think eventually, the professionalism and cooler heads prevailed, and we worked out the problem. Thank you.
Well, I would agree. Everything seems to be very amicable, and I guess, I would, it just came to mind that today in the commission meeting, it was brought up that the fire and rescue, the specific rescue team is shared amongst, you know, is available to go to other places across the state if there is a disaster. And that shows leadership. That shows cooperation amongst this leadership to create those kinds of entities, and then you lead by example. My folks always told me, "To whom much is given, much is expected." And I think we look outside of just our county, too, and we say, "Look at the communities around us. We're regional, right? We want to be a regional leader. We have to help them along, too. If we all, you know, if we all want to succeed, we have to do this together." And then, what's always been impressive to me, since I've come back and examined, you know, my community as an adult, and I think I felt it in my younger years, but I understand it more now. There's a lot of community organizations, non-governmental but that work very closely with the government. Fannie County Live Well is a great example, that we all have similar priorities. Let's not be redundant, let's work together. And you build those relationships amongst a community of folks who know each other and work together and have similar interests, but let's not be redundant, let's work together. We all have a common goal, and I think that we're rich in that. Just even the community, you know, organizations and the inter-agency councils that already exist, we have that here. Let's harness it and use it. And I think that as the state commission, we should be part of leading that initiative.
I have one more question, then we'll get to the closing. And this, again, is one from the audience. Governing bodies have given significant incentives to large corporations through tax abatements to locate and generate sales tax here in Fannie County. What then is the justification for additional sales tax?
The sales tax that we want, the sales tax that is being proposed of three tenths of 1% is going to be used for some very productive things that we need. The city continues to grow. The city needs more money. The infrastructure continues to grow. Sewers continue to expand. Water has to expand. Electricity has to expand. All of these things cost the city money. We're going to have to have the additional three tenths of 1% to fund the projects that we need to do. That's all I can tell you.
Can you repeat that question?
The governing bodies have given significant incentives to large corporations through tax abatements to locate in Fannie County and generate sales tax here. What then is the justification for additional sales tax?
So here's, I'm going to give you a little reference here. The current Star Bond project out there, in 2014, the revenue generated from that was $39.5 million. In 2016, it almost doubled to $72 million in a short two-year period. I really, this is where I really want to look at where the taxes are going from those additional revenue sources, and that's what a commissioner's role is to do, is to look and see where those taxes are going and how they're being put out there. The additional sales tax, I'm still on neutral basis on that. Without looking at the details myself, I couldn't answer that correctly.
I think we're talking about oranges and apples here. If you really want to know the truth, it's two different things. The tax abatement for large companies to come in, to allow them a little break in their taxes to help pay for their projects, probably without them, we probably wouldn't have had a Menards, Hobby Lobby, and any of that stuff out on Schulman Avenue. Those things are, were put into place. It's a way to do it and to help them, but also to help us. Eventually, they're going to have to start paying, and that starts, that'll run out in a few more years. It's a whole different thing about the taxes that we're trying to raise for projects that we're doing today. That is to enhance the community and items that's been on the CIP for a number of years. And so it's two different things, really.
I too understand that as two-part question. The incentives are just for that. We give a little to have a lot, literally have them pay taxes, hire more people. People buy, people interact. As far as the justification for additional taxes, I'm not exactly sure what it is. I don't see the connection between how they want us to increase the taxes, but at the same time, give the incentives. I'm not sure if they mean give more incentives to the companies that are coming in or leave it as it is. I don't, of course, incentives are necessary, I believe, for major company corporations to come in and set up shop. But the other part of the question, I'm not sure how to answer that, other than the capital improvement projects that we have. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take a swing at this. And I'll just say that the first 25 years of my life have been spent very much in a medicine scientific kind of realm. So my now understanding of more governmental policy outside of me, you know, having my very long interest in government affairs, but understanding the difference between these different kinds of bonds and how this is all financed is new. But here's how I would try and link it. So even, you know, and we're talking about different kinds of bonds, too. We're talking about industrial revenue bonds, like the dairy plant, and then we're talking about different things with the Star Bonds. I mean, everything's structured just a little bit differently. But what those things have in common is they come from state statute, right? So as long as that state statute exists, we're competing against other communities. And if we all of a sudden say, "Well, we're not going to offer that," even though we have to kind of bear the burden of that tax abatement for a while, as Mayor Dale said, you know, eventually they have to start paying, that's the cost of getting them to our community, okay? How I would link it is to say, they're here, and now when we want to raise a sales tax, we have a retailer who's bringing a bigger tax base into us that are shopping here, and so we're able to raise sales tax and spread that around outside of the folks who just live in this community. That's my understanding.
So this idea of tax abatement, I think, you know, again, this idea of being really responsible when we offer those, and then again, really structuring the deal and making sure it's the best deal, not only for that business owner, but also it's a great deal for us as a city. I think now that we've done that a lot, we've got a lot of things that attract. I appreciate all the work that our economic development, the Fannie County Economic Development has done to bring new business in here and really lock it in, and also the Garden City Chamber of Commerce. I mean, if, you know, they come here and then they stay. So I think the idea of what that looks like when we give those tax abatements, we, you know, really be responsible, and I think they have been, I mean, but again, be reasonable, too. I mean, you know, we've attracted a lot. Now, do we have to give as much away to attract additional? As far as with the sales tax, this idea of really thinking about, I mean, who it really impacts. And I think if we would take projects and trust our voters and say, "Hey, let's do this project first," and then think about, rather than globbing them all together, I think that's what gets really confusing. And I'm not saying any of these projects aren't valuable and necessary, but I think this idea of really bringing them all together really confuses not only voters, but it's really hard to support the one issue, because Ginny Barker is different than the shooting range is different than the fire station, and all of these are important, including the zoo. And I love our zoo, but this idea, I think that there is a way our community would support our zoo if we needed to. And we do need to, and so what are other ways to really support them? But I think this idea of really, if we more often come to the voters and get their opinion rather than, hey, let's bring this all together in just one. And so sometimes at the city commission, I know that they talk about the wheels of government move very slowly, but I think that's really this idea of making sure it's a win-win for everyone in our community, and really thinking about the long-term impact. So if it's 10 years for this, and then we have to go another 15 years for that, then I think that's really asking permission of our voters and the people to say, "Hey, you know, what you trust us. We did a great job with this. So can we move on to something else that's equally important?"
Okay, it's time for closing statements. John, we'll start with you.
Okay.
Again, three minutes.
Three minutes. I'll argue way less than three minutes.
Up to three minutes.
So in closing, I'd like to say, if you're looking for a candidate that has strong family values, that is pro-economic growth, and very, very hard on the tradition of success of Garden City with our current leadership that we've had, we've been very successful with this leadership, then I would ask you to vote for me on November 7. Thank you.
First off, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce, Mike Hyde, for sponsoring this event this evening. I would like to express my desire to continue to serve the community of Garden City. It seems I've been privileged to be in public service most of my life, after 20 years in the Navy, 30 years in law enforcement, and finally a retirement after 21 years in the State Farm Marshal's Office in 2008. My tenure as a member of the Garden City Commission has really been an extension of the same profile for personality, public service, and whatever capacity has always been rewarding and fulfilling as well as challenging. It's surely a privilege to serve on a commission-like-minded and appropriately progressive member for four and a half years. Garden City has been a very fortunate in the past and up to this present day with excellent planners and forward thinkers. We see the evidence of this with the recent development of Schulman Crossing. The influx of new stores and restaurants have resulted in increased revenue and sales tax, which have funded several CIP projects. The city created the Jameson Energy Centers, resulting in reducing electrical costs and giving us an $11 million reserve, enabling us to purchase electric power on the open market. Property south of town was purchased for water rights, and that property had been leased to Dairy Farmers of America for milk processing, creating jobs for Garden City residents as well as surrounding areas. Garden City has an aggressive maintenance process in place. Already, we've cleaned 40,000 feet water line in the city, and we replaced 8,000 water line feet in the city in the last four years. This is to provide clean drinking water on an ongoing street repair critical of thriving and growing city. By comparison to our neighboring communities, our city is showing good, steady, and positive growth. Garden City is an excellent example of what we can do by accomplishment when the city commission, city staff, and public work together for the good of the whole. I'm very much desired to continue to be a part of this team, to be part of the growth taking place in Garden City today, and to help plan for the future growth tomorrow. I hope for the opportunity to serve you during this exciting time for Garden City and her residents. Thank you.
Again, I'd like to thank everybody for showing up, for one, and the chamber for making this possible. I just want to say that when we moved back to Garden City, we immediately bought a house. We invested in Garden City. I was one of the first to hook up solar energy, solar power, to the grid of Garden City. I was shocked, actually, to believe that I was the first one to do that, believing that Garden City was more into the green energy and into progressive effort to avoid the carbon footprint, I think that's what it's called. But I feel that Garden City is growing. It's a nice home. It's, like I said, I've lived here before. I moved out, I had moved out 15 and a half years ago, and I'd like to continue the growth. I'd like to be a catalyst. I'd like to help encourage and include diversity, cultural diversity in our chambers. And I feel that with my experience in law enforcement, I think I can also help the community understand and educate the public. I believe I can do that. Thank you.
Again, thank you all for coming. Thank you to the chamber. I think what you've heard, what I've heard, and I hope has come through from all of us tonight, is a real genuine interest in our community, commitment to our community. And I think that's the cool thing about local government, is it's about your community, your neighbors. And certainly in my life, I have benefited from lovely family, friends, neighbors, friends in this community. I want to be an advocate. If I could just sum up what my mission here is, is I want to be an advocate for those people, and that's what I hope to do here. I think that any of these folks are worthy of your vote, but I hope that you'll give me a chance to serve you.
So I also want to say thank you to the Garden City Chamber of Commerce. I appreciate you making this available, this forum, and also the other candidates. I know there's, and all of us have busy schedules, so I appreciate everyone being here tonight, and everyone who could attend, even some of the honorary people in the audience tonight. I want to talk a little about this idea of, I really believe that anyone can lead anytime, anywhere, and so this idea of really that leadership is an activity. It's really, it's an exercise. It's really not a position. So really, all of us have been leading in certain ways, and so what I'm asking is this idea of the position is really giving others the representation, as I, as again, I want to serve the community by listening and being, and be able to learn. Also, I think our purpose needs to be clear as far as the city commission. So what does that look like as a city commission and as a commissioner? So really benefiting Garden City and its citizens. I really want to, I'm working, I want to work to engage Garden City in more of the decision-making by going out and being with them. To keep our city affordable and safe, I really appreciate our emphasis on police and the fire and the essential services. To support businesses, big and small, I appreciate their chamber and economic development so much, because I think that's really what they do. Working really to bring our brightest and best back home, increasing, I get the opportunity to serve on the Community Health Advisory Board, which is a city advisory board through that, and I really love the work that we're doing around physical activity and health. I love being out on tele-trail and all the other areas of activity in our community and seeing people and their families. I got the chance to work as a lifeguard at the big pool this summer. I'll tell you, one of my favorite things is to see families coming together, dads and moms and their kids, and enjoying a day at our big pool. I want to make sure that I'm available to listen and also to learn, and to welcome everyone who wants to live here. I want to talk just a few minutes about some of my experience. Right now, I'm the vice chairman of the Fannie County Convention and Tourism Board. I love the work we do. We have been bringing incredible events and really using not only those tax dollars to generate more, but to really benefit our community. I'm the current chairman of the Garden City Teachers Federal Credit Union, have learned a lot, and so I'm excited we were able to engineer a new move. One of my favorite things to do is Leadership Garden City. We're right in the midst of a current class, and so if you've never been through Leadership Garden City, see me afterwards. We would love to have you. I want to talk a little bit about just, again, something I really love and I still support wholeheartedly, is the Western Kansas Community Foundation. I started as a board member and was able to serve as a program officer for 16 years. It was incredible work, and I love how we've grown from $3 million to almost $30 million. It's been exciting to see the work that this organization has done. Next year, it's hard to believe, but I begin my 30th year in business with my father, which has been an honor and a privilege as a state farm insurance agent. We've kept our business here. We've been in the same location, thanks to Dan, for many years, and we've really enjoyed serving Western Kansas. And I'll tell you, we've seen, we love the people of Garden City, and so we want to make sure that we're viable and that we're giving people what they need. So I ask for your vote on November 7, and I'm excited to be your city commissioner.
Oh, my goodness, I wish I talked as fast as Troy. I'm going to need more time to get that many words in. As I have talked to people around the community, I've been told that we need female representation on the board, and we need Hispanic representation on the board, and we need diversity. I don't qualify on either of those issues. You might as well tell me that you're only going to elect people with a full head of hair. tell me that you're only gonna like people with a full head of hair. Yeah, yeah. I don't care about diversity so much. I don't care that we're a diversified community. And the reason I say that is because I only care about your heart. I don't care whether you're black or Hispanic or what religion you have. I don't care whether you're male or female. I don't care about anything that you may think differentiates us, as long as you have a good heart. So I don't really want a diversified community. I only want people with good hearts in Garden City. That's not totally realistic. So we have a great professional law enforcement. The city makes sure it's professional. I love the way the city is run. You know, almost a year ago, I had the great fortune of a truly wonderful woman agreeing to marry me. She happens to be of Hispanic descent. I don't care. She has the heart. She has an incredible heart. That's what I care. That's what I see in people. That's who I want to represent. I will represent you whether you're male, female, Hispanic, black. I don't care. If you have a good heart, you talk to me, I will represent you. And I hope to get your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to again, to thank the city of Garden City for providing the venue, the nice forum. It is available for those who just wanted to see this and before they did not have the opportunity to be here this evening on Facebook, Garden City Chamber.
Probably tomorrow.
Tomorrow, Facebook. Also want to remind you Thursday evening, we'll be right back here again at 6 o'clock, we will have USD 457 candidate forum. And then at 7:30, we'll we will have the Garden City Community College trustee forum. So we'd like to thank you all, each and every one of you for being here this evening. We appreciate that. I'd like to thank the audience. I'd like to thank the TV crew for being here. So with that, we're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris Jewell, host of High Plains Today, a 30-minute news and information program that airs weekdays at noon right here on TV 23. We talk about news. We talk about sports. We talk about weather. We're even going to talk entertainment. We'll have live guests right here on set with me. So every day at noon, tune in, High Plains Today. We'll see you then.
Weekdays here on TV 23. When you do business with United Wireless, you're doing business with people living and working right here in southwest Kansas, not someone halfway across the world. We're proud of the fact that every day we serve our friends and neighbors, our healthcare providers, and hairdressers, technicians, farmers, and local retailers. You are the people who make southwest Kansas great. And for all you do, we believe you should be treated with the utmost respect. We are United Wireless, and we are southwest Kansas proud.
There's something I feel when I'm right here, something that tells me that I'm oh, oh, people are people around here. That's how it is. It's so clear. Oh, oh, letting it show. I've been around the world, oh, really to find what I already know. This is the place. Everybody here knows it. This is the place. Oh, it's home to me and you. Yeah.
Portions of TV 23's internet provided by SWKO Wireless Internet. Covering the high plains with news, weather, and information from TV 23 Studios in Seblen. This is High Plains Today.
Yes, it is. Hi, everybody. It is Tuesday, September 19th, 2017. Welcome to High Plains Today here on TV 23. On today's show, I'm going to be talking to Keely Maury. She is the Marketing and Development Director at the Southwest Medical Center in Liberal, and they have a community health fair coming up on Saturday, October 7. And we're going to tell you all about what you can have done and everything else that's going on with that. In the meantime, let's take a look at happenings. A 50-year-old man from Guyman died after a Saturday afternoon motorcycle crash in Hansford County. The Texas Department of Public Safety said troopers were called to the crash on State Highway 15 around 1:15 PM. David Ariola was driving a motorcycle southeast on the highway about 11 miles west of Groover when he failed to negotiate a curve. Ariola lost control of the motorcycle. The bike left the roadway, struck a pole. Department of Public Safety said he was not wearing a helmet at the time of the crash. Carl Brewer was the second Democratic candidate for governor to meet with Fannie County Democrats in recent weeks as gubernatorial candidate Josh Swati met with the group on August 31st. Now Brewer introduced himself to the group, saying he served 21 years in the military. He also spent eight years as mayor of Wichita, and before that, he was a sheet metal mechanic in the aircraft industry. Later on, he served as Senior Manager of Government Relations at Spirit Aviation. Brewer was back on the campaign trail after taking a short hiatus to be with his family to grieve the unexpected death of his three-year-old grandson, Evan Brewer. And another Kansas teenager threw his hat into the ring to run for governor in 2018. 16-year-old Tyler Ruzick of Prairie Village, and he's a junior at Shawnee Mission North High School, filed campaign account papers with the state this week. He considers himself a moderate Republican. Now, Ruzick said a history teacher had pointed out that in Kansas, there was no minimum age requirement for governor. When news broke in August that a 16-year-old Wichita Democrat, Jack Bergerson, was running for governor, Ruzick contacted Bergerson. Bergerson asked, have you ever thought of running? He said, you know, he had kind of thought of that. And Bergerson encouraged Ruzick to just go for it. And a Holcomb woman was the winner of a second chance drawing for a truck in the Kansas Lottery's Trucks and Bucks event last Saturday at the Kansas State Fair. Carrie Cole got the choice of one of three new trucks or $50,000 cash as her prize, and she selected a 2017 Chevrolet Silverado Crew Cab LTZZ71. Congratulations, Carrie. And don't forget, the Grant County Chamber of Commerce, they're going to host their 55th Annual Home Products Dinner at 7 o'clock tonight at the Grant County Civic Center. Now, you have to have a button to get in, and that's what's required for admission. Now, they're available at many Ulysses businesses. They're only $8. There will also be event buttons available at the door. Now, the button will include the meal, the collector button, and live entertainment. Don't forget, pick up your button. If you can't find one, call the Chamber of Commerce. Dinner proceeds go to the Grant County Scholarship Foundation. Boy, that's a lot of words. This year's entertainment will be comedian Moody McCarthy. I encourage you, if you are in Grant County or close, don't have anything to do, get on over there because that is some good food. All right, that's a look at some of the stuff that's happening out there. You know what? We've got a cold front. Okay, it's not really cold, but it's going to be down into the 80s as opposed to the upper 90s today. Be back with a look at the weather right after this.
You're watching High Plains Today on TV 23 with host Chris Jewell. TV 23's internet service and 4G live streaming provided by United Wireless. Coverage you deserve, service you expect. United Wireless.
This is a national health alert from the 24/7 Diabetic Health Hotline. If you, a family member or loved one has diabetes, listen closely. Now, regardless of your age, if you have insurance, you may qualify to receive diabetic testing supplies with little to no out-of-pocket cost. If you call right now, you could get a free meter upgrade. In addition, we'll give you a free pedometer. It's our special gift to you. Call the 24/7 Diabetic Health Hotline now for details. Toll-free at this number. Call now.
Stop. Living with hair loss, that is. Losing your hair is no fun, and no one wants to be bald, but there is hope.
Getting my hair back was the best thing that ever happened to me. I'm happy with the way I look now. I'm very excited about my hair.
I feel beautiful. I love my hair.
Hair Club offers all proven hair loss solutions backed by our commitment to satisfaction guarantee. If you're not 100% satisfied with the solution you choose, Hair Club will apply the purchase price to another proven hair loss solution or transplant more hair at no charge.
It was the best thing I've ever done.
It looks good on me.
Call in the next five minutes to get your free brochure at no obligation. It will tell you everything you need to know about your hair loss problem, and it's free if you call now.
I am more pleased than what I had even imagined.
I at least look, I would say, five years younger.
I'm 52, and I look better now than I did when I was in my 40s.
I feel great.
And that's not all. The first 100 people who call will also receive $250 off any hair loss solution from Hair Club. Call now.
College is great, but before you enroll, which do you think is a better way to earn your degree? Live on campus in a dorm where you can't sleep, with a roommate you can't stand, attend lectures that you can't hear, with cafeteria food that you can't eat, or learn online at Independence University? On the porch with your puppy, in the kitchen with your kitten, on your bed with your bunny? Your campus is wherever you want it to be. That's Independence University. And you'll also get a laptop and tablet to use in school, and you can keep them when you graduate.
1-800-274-8142.
Now, the local weather forecast for the high plains.
And we're back. Not a lot of clouds out there today as we look off to the northeast over the Seblen High School, Middle School. You know, it's a pretty nice day. We had a little bit of rain, so grass is still pretty green. Football field's looking real good, too. Let's take a look at our current readings here at the stations. 83 degrees, 44% relative humidity. Trust me, that's going to go down. Winds are out of the south at only 8 right now. They're going to pick up. Barometric pressure is falling. As we look at the current temperatures around the area, you can see everybody is in the 80s, mid 80s, upper 80s and 90s. Now, that's going to go up. Now, as we look at the dew points, can you tell where the dry line is? You look out here, Dew Point and Lamar, 30, 45, and Elkhart. Then you start getting back into the 50s and 60s. Yeah, it's running about right through here. And now this is going to make its way across the state today, and it's going to end up over here about haze down through Medicine Lodge. So humidity is going to drop. Winds are going to go up. Right now, you can see that they are starting to pick up out of the southwest. They're going to be, we're in a red flag warning for the southwest, for the entire viewing area today and the panhandles of Oklahoma and Texas. I mean, there's a high fire danger out there today, people, so be careful. Looking at the highs and lows as recorded at the Garden City Regional Airport, we did get to 87 yesterday, a little shorter than 105 back in 1954. Overnight low yesterday when you walked out, 56 degrees, 37 back in 1971. And some of that rain that rolled through Garden City early yesterday morning, they picked up to 100s. All right, here's what we've got in store for today. 95 for the high. You could see some hundreds once you get over around Clearwater Ashland area. Winds are going to be out of the south southwest at 20. They're going to be picking up into the mid, upper 20s. Could be gusting up to around 40 miles an hour. Overnight low, 36. Winds are going to be out of the south southwest. They're going to drop off a little bit, yeah, after midnight down into the mid teens, although they're going to shift around once that cold front starts to come through. It'll be here early tomorrow morning, so our high tomorrow's only going to be 82 degrees. Not going to be any clouds with that tomorrow. Winds are going to be out of the north at 13, switching to the east later on in the day. Tomorrow's overnight low will be 57, clear skies, east, southeast winds. That's pretty pleasant. All right, now, as we look, as we go through, there is another front that's going to be moving in over this weekend. As you can see, we're going to heat up on Thursday into the 90s. That's going to bring us an other front, good chance of rain through the weekend carrying into next week. Highs are going to start dropping back down into the 70s. That's a look at the weather. Be back with the markets and Keely after this.
You want to feel connected, informed, included, inspired. So when important things happen, we're here, your local TV and radio broadcasters, America's number one source for news, weather, and information on every screen in your life. We are broadcasters, always here for you, wherever here may be. Text TV to 52886. Tell Washington local stations matter.
This is a national health alert from the 24/7 Diabetic Health Hotline. If you, a family member or loved one has diabetes, listen closely. Now, regardless of your age, if you have insurance, you may qualify to receive diabetic testing supplies with little to no out-of-pocket cost. If you call right now, you could get a free meter upgrade. In addition, we'll give you a free pedometer. It's our special gift to you. Call the 24/7 Diabetic Health Hotline now for details. Toll-free at this number. Call now.
Stop. Living with hair loss, that is. Losing your hair is no fun, and no one wants to be bald, but there is hope.
Getting my hair back was the best thing that ever happened to me. I'm happy with the way I look now. I'm very excited about my hair.
I feel beautiful. I love my hair.
Hair Club offers all proven hair loss solutions backed by our commitment to satisfaction guarantee. If you're not 100% satisfied with the solution you choose, Hair Club will apply the purchase price to another proven hair loss solution or transplant more hair at no charge.
It was the best thing I've ever done.
It looks good on me.
Call in the next five minutes to get your free brochure at no obligation. It will tell you everything you need to know about your hair loss problem, and it's free if you call now.
I am more pleased than what I had even imagined.
I at least look, I would say, five years younger.
I'm 52, and I look better now than I did when I was in my 40s.
I feel great.
And that's not all. The first 100 people who call will also receive $250 off any hair loss solution from Hair Club. Call now.
Americans can still get prescriptions free.
Free could be wonderful.
That's why I'm still working at 77 years old to pay off my prescriptions.
I needed to have a prescription filled, and I had to leave because I couldn't afford it.
Call now and see what's available for you. Free prescriptions. Over 10 million people get prescriptions free, and the program has expanded, so another 40 million can. Free dental. Over 15,000 dentists have provided over $330 million in free dental work. Free cell phones. 40 million free cell phones are still available with free minutes and more.
Free cellphone would change my life right now because it's something I cannot afford to get.
Medical supplies like back braces, knee braces, and diabetic supplies may be covered, too. The free RX Plus hotline has saved callers over $12 million on their prescription costs. These free programs are now available to 40 million more people. Call now. College is great, but before you enroll, which do you think is a better way to earn your degree? Live on campus in a dorm where you can't sleep, with a roommate you can't stand, attend lectures that you can't hear, with cafeteria food that you can't eat, or learn online at Independence University? On the porch with your puppy, in the kitchen with your kitten, on your bed with your bunny? Your campus is wherever you want it to be. Heck, you could earn your degree while wearing your PJs or while eating BLT with your baby because you don't go to college. College goes to you. Complete your courses around your schedule. That's Independence. That's Independence University. No alarm clocks, no snoring roommate, no loud parties keeping you up all night, no note on your door telling you to sleep somewhere else. Instead, learn online at Independence University. Get your degree, but keep your life. And you'll also get a laptop and tablet to use in school, and you can keep them when you graduate. Learn online from professional instructors with real work experience. You get professional support in school and employment assistance when you graduate. Independence you, for an independent you. 1-800-234-302.
And I'm back. I'm joined in studio today by Ms. Keely Maury. She is the Marketing and Development Director for the Southwest Medical Center, Liberal America. How are you today? I haven't seen you for a while.
I know. It's always fun to come here.
You, you have a big health fair coming up.
Yes.
Saturday.
Saturday.
October 7.
Yes.
That baby starts at 7:00 AM.
Yes, it does.
Runs till noon.
Mm-hmm.
That's a big deal. Runs till noon.
Mm-hmm.
That's a big deal.
It is a big deal.
That's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work. It takes really all year to put together our health fair. It's a community health fair, so we work with people from all over our area to bring in people who have services to offer here. And then we go forth and we market it, and we really just want to invite as many people as possible to come to it, so.
All right, so.
Yes.
I get up Saturday morning.
Yes.
And I'm thinking, I'm going to go to the health fair. Some of the things, though, I need to do if I want to get some of the tests and that kind of stuff done.
Yes, yes.
Are, you have to do like, if you were going